The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact the city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, equal and free. The Lord is our justice and our law.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and the communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through N and Communications O through S.
There is a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
Yes. I would ask that the Director of Parks Department kind of fill us in on the bass tournament that's coming up, the National Northern Regional Fishing Tournament.
Yes, thanks for asking.
And some of those issues.
So included in your packet is a memo kind of outlining that we will be hosting the 2023 Northern Regional Bass Nation Tournament. So this is one of five tournaments within the nation. And then based on who wins or who places within that, then they go to a championship from there. So we're very excited to host that here. It's from June 25th through the 30th. We're expecting 80 to 90 bass boats to be included in this tournament. So you have, you know, two fishermen, so you're talking a couple hundred people plus their families. We've been working with Fox Cities Visitors and Convention Bureau to put this together as well as the Bass Master Organization as a whole. We've worked with Manassia PD as well to put together a parking plan and an operations plan. So some of what we will be providing is potential assistance with traffic flow, especially in the evening or the late afternoon. They do launch fairly early in the morning. It's a wave of launches, so they don't go out at one time. They go out in waves, and then they will be returning in that same method. Once they return, they do a live weigh-in. People can certainly be part of that or watch that if they wish. And then they can leave the park at that time. The reason it's the 25th through the 30th is they do have a couple days in which they can come in and do practice fishing. The actual tournament itself is from June 28th through the 30th. So just those three days. Like I said, we did coordinate with Manassia PD on an operations plan because we do want to limit the interruptions. This is the middle of summer. There is construction, utility work happening around the park. We have coordinated also with the Engineering Department to make sure that the actual reconstruction of Third Street and Conamec doesn't begin until after the Fourth of July. So the utility work is expected to be wrapped up prior to this tournament, and that we won't start any actual reconstruction until after that. So there will be a window in there in which some of that machinery will be out of the way and we'll have access to that.
Thank you.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Landmarks Commission, I just wanted to thank everyone that showed up for the public walk in collaboration with the Historical Society. We had great weather. And Tammy Martin was the winner of our downtown gift card. And then everyone that attended got ice cream Met Sweet Lairs. So they're very happy. So, thank you.
Forty-ish people?
Roughly.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
None.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak today? Who's this? Yep, got it.
Christopher Evansen, 523 Broad Street. I just wanted to give you what I'll call the River Rat Report. And it primarily deals with the Racine Street Bridge. The first issue is that, especially with Dottie to Dottie Island to the downtown traffic, every vehicle crossing that bridge makes a huge clunk. Even cars make a clunk, but if you've got a fire truck, or a bus, or a big truck with a trailer, it's a loud clunk, and it's a metallic clunk, and it's got to be some type of vibration within the steel. It happens right where the bascule portions meet. We can hear it when it's a big vehicle, we can hear it inside of our house. We're two doors down from the bridge. So we're close, we're used to city noise, we're used to bridge noise, but not this noise. This tells me something needs to be looked at and investigated, certainly before the city takes ownership of this thing. It can't be good for the machinery itself, it can't be good for the concrete housing that this machinery sits in. The second thing, the bypass navigational channel is not being used, is certainly not being used as it was advertised to us. And we are retired, we sit out back and watch the river, it's the thing that we enjoy in life, okay? And Memorial Weekend was a perfect weekend to watch all of the boats go up and down. But boats that could go under the bridge itself, if they just lowered their antenna, aren't taking this, what we call the slot. And right now, the gates are closed. This is a pond where we live now. And so you can understand if gates are open, maybe more boats are going to go through and have the bridge open and close. But right now, you can kayak through there, you can kayak upstream. Talk to the bridge operator, he'll tell you, because we have, that there are tons of boats that are going through the bridge, causing it to open, that don't need to. They can go right through the slot. But it's not being used. So something, whatever can be done to change that, needs to be done. You can watch the film that they have of the traffic on the river. The third thing, just to report, is there's no safety cable from the bridge to the shore to help prevent people or boats in distress go through the dam. We've been on the horn to the sheriff's office on 911 any number of times over the 27 years we've lived there, and hopefully have prevented some people from going through there. But without that safety cable, and you're allowing navigation, and now you're going to have a bass tournament, that's a mean stretch of river, or can be, especially when the gates are open. So what's going on in that regard, I don't know. So that's the River Rat Report. I'll be back in touch.
Thanks for bringing some of those things to our attention, Chris. We are aware of the noise, and we've talked to the DOT about that, and we're looking into that. I was not aware of the cable being gone, were you? So that's a good point to bring up, but we will talk to them about that as well.
Cable.
The safety cable. Yep, it should be back up. Anyone else?
I'm kind of new to microphones here.
No problem.
Never know. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you guys who work really hard, especially you, Alderman woman Eisenach. Thank you so much for responding to my email. I'm just coming here because I live on Fourth Street, 722 Fourth Street. My name is Mary Swodowski. And we have a situation of a three stop sign intersection. As you're aware, on Fourth, well, maybe you probably don't drive down that way a lot, but on Fourth Street, where it crosses Appleton Street, Appleton Street no longer goes through, and you've just had the railroad tracks. So you have three stop signs there. Okay, take your house and put it on that block. Now, would you get annoyed if every time you drove past, there's a three-way stop? And there's, I don't know how to explain it. My concern, I guess I should just say, my concern is that we have traffic stopped from the, I get east, west, whatever, mixed up. But on the first side, on the second side across, and the third side, there's railroad tracks here. There's no reason for the traffic to have to stop on Fourth Street. There's hardly any traffic that comes down to Appleton Street to turn left or right. A yield sign or a stop sign there would be more than sufficient. And I just ask if you guys just imagine it in your head so you can kind of see, you know, the intersection, you've got a three-way stop, when there really doesn't need to be one on Fourth Street. And it kind of, I know a lot of people actually go through it. I don't. But a lot of people go through it all the time because it's just kind of a, I think something that was just forgotten or left over. So, anyway, I really appreciate your time. And like I said, I appreciate you guys listening and all the work you guys do. I know it's a lot of work, and I know office things and people's complaints aren't always the best thing to listen to day after day. But I do, I know I vote all the time, and I really appreciate all of your hard work and the consideration for some of us who don't know how to speak out. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. A lot on the agenda tonight. Really quick, under Communications, Bird Scooter has their method of contact, whereas they want any complaints to go directly to Bird, either through their app or their website. Honestly, the average person is not going to do that. If they see it blocking a sidewalk, they're going to either call the city or their alderman. Additionally, by having Bird do it, I really question if the count would be accurate, because they have control of the complaints that way. So how do you know that that's really going to be an accurate count of complaints? So I just wanted to bring that up. Under the check register, I had one question on page, page eight, StanTech Consulting, $42,000 for the Bonta Parking Lot and Whiting Mill. I'm assuming that's environmental testing, or Phase One ESA or Phase Two. What's the separation between the Bonta, which we own, and the Whiting Mill that we don't? If there could be some clarification from community development on why we're environmentally assessing, or whatever it is, that Whiting Mill that we don't own. Then I just wanted to make a few comments regarding the Racine Street Bridge, as my neighbor had mentioned. And I do want to thank the Landmarks Commission and the Manassia Historical Society for their tour of the downtown. And we did stop at the Bridgetender House last Saturday, which was very enjoyable. Thank you, and informative. In addition to, he calls it a clunker, a claim, I refer to this noise as thunder. And the heavier the vehicle, the louder the thunder. And I know my husband has probably contacted every one of you regarding that, so I'm not going to go into that or the cracks. But a few things I did want to bring up that may not have been mentioned is going through the Taco Street Bridge Tower, there is a step up when you first enter. And I don't think that is in compliance, because it's a large step, greater than your typical step, that I don't think is, it either needs a step installed or a railing. Someone's going to exit or enter and break their ankle going in and out of there. Obviously, the tower is not made to be ADA compliant. So that kind of is unfortunate for anyone that would want to be employed there, they wouldn't be able to apply. There is a steel door leading to the basement that does not meet the steel frame. It is cocked open with no handle because you can't shut the door. Obviously, something is wrong, has to be removed. Concrete block has to probably be busted out to replace this door. And there's no communication currently with the Taco Street Bridge. They have to either call someone in or manually, physically drive down to the other bridge because of the remote control or remote operation, et cetera. And my neighbor had mentioned, he called it the slot, the bypass clearance, where the larger boats can get through without having to open the bridge. What I noticed is that there is no clearance marker. Where the drawbridge is, there's a marker that says the height, the clearance height that your boat could get through. If there was one on this bypass channel, maybe boats would know, hey, we can get through there. It might just be a matter of training a few people and educating people that that's available. And then lastly, regarding the bridge, once ownership is transferred over and we do retain this bridge, I would strongly suggest that at that time, we regulate operating hours, not operating hours, but opening hours, that peak traffic times, your lunch hours, your morning commute, your afternoon commute. Because now, this is, the vast majority is recreational boating, it is not commerce anymore, and we can regulate the hours. It's done in DePere, done in Oshkosh, that we are not having traffic, vehicular traffic backed up. So enough about the bridge. Quickly, regarding the Bass National Northern Regional Fishing Tournament, that sounds really exciting, coming to Manassia. Unfortunately, the website and the link provided by the Director of Park and Rec, it says Fox Cities. So if you Google Fox Cities, you get Appleton, Nina, Kokona, Fox Crossing. From a marketing standpoint, when we want to welcome people to Manassia, show off Jefferson Park, all the work we're doing to facilitate this event, and they can't say "Manassia." To me, that's rather discerning. I know the Fox Cities Convention Bureau is working on it, but we have no hotel, so we're not going to benefit from that. The most we can benefit is the bars and restaurants. But I do think that that is something that should be addressed, that the name "Manassia" gets in there somewhere. And then also, I am concerned because they are going to be kind of regulating the everyday boater from leaving their boat lounge or boat and trailer, that the neighboring streets do not become congested with these boats and trailers of the everyday person that wants to be able to fish off of, like, the Manitowoc Street Lounge, that that whole neighborhood doesn't get impacted. And also, the way the Park Department has planned it is to use the green space at Jefferson Park that was the former armory. I was trying, thank you very much. As parking for this tournament, to me, that would require an ordinance change because we have regulations, you can't park on the grass. Then, quickly, we have the outdoor beverage permit applications for this year. I just want to, now that the downtown is becoming much more residential than it ever was before, keep in mind that as popular as outdoor dining and outdoor music is, I feel in the years to come, we're going to have more complaints because of all the number of residential property that is nearby. In fact, some of these cannot be within 100 feet of residential property, is exclusive residential property. The outdoor dining cannot consist greater than 50% of the gross floor area of the enclosed building. The sound of its amplified sound cannot be heard more than 150 feet from the property line. And any property owner within 150 feet needs to be notified of this outdoor dining and outdoor music. I bring this to your attention because these businesses that are applying for this, there's like roughly about 10, they have to come before the council, it has to be approved by you, they have to give a site plan, they have to comply with all this and their insurance. But we have one paragraph in our ordinance that I forgot to print out that totally bypasses this whole thing. And I want to, at some point, speak to the new chief of police, because it gives him permission to just grant any bar that could be right next door to a home to expand their event into their parking lot. Music, beer, the whole thing. And to me, with no notification, nothing, the alderman doesn't even have to know. And I would really like, I will forward you that text. I would really like to see that eliminated, because it does not affect any non-for-profit or church group, or a church picnic, or the Elks Club, or anything like that, because they can apply for a picnic permit. This is preventing a few bars in town that want to have parties outside in their parking lot during the summer. I know they're popular, and I'm not going to be a popular person for saying this, but it doesn't fringe on those residential properties that are abutting or across the street. People that work shifts, people have kids, and even if they say, oh, it's just rental, hey, they have lives too. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion this evening, or does anyone want items separated? Are you, did you want to comment, Alderman?
I see you want to do something different. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like just for us to move forward with the minutes, both the Common Council Minutes of 5:15:23 and the Special Common Council Minutes of 5:22:23.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I did contact Clerk Newman this morning about this, so she is aware. On page three of the May 15 minutes, at the very top, it should say "Motion Carried on Roll Call 52," because that is the one where Alderman Eisenach abstained. And that is my correction for those minutes.
Any other discussion? So we'll just take that as a correction, and Clerk Newman can fix that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Is there a motion for the street use application? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the street use application for Community Fest Parade of Lights, which is going to be on Monday, July 3rd. That's from 9:00 PM to 10:15 PM between the City of Manassia and City of Nina.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I don't think we need a roll call for this. Correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. There's a second street use application. Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor.
Whoops, wrong button.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the second application to Midwest Sun Splash. This will be on Friday, July 21st, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Saturday, July 22nd, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And this is for Youth Go.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Do we have a motion for the city official newspaper? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Post Crescent as the City of Manassia's official city newspaper for 2023-24, as recommended by the Administration Committee.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond. I'm going to make you do a roll call on this one.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. Is there a motion for the accounts payable and payroll? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 12th through June 1st, 2023, in the amount of $3,716,796.11.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, and I'm not sure who's the second. Ted? Okay. Any discussion? Did you have discussion?
Yes, I do. I have discussion, and then I would like to remove a check from the registry as well. My discussion has to do with something that came up in public comments. It can either be answered by Director Sassman, or Director Schrader, or both of you. Combined page 33, it is check number 78192, made out to StanTech. And it is noted in the captions that it is regarding the Bonta Parking Lot and the Whiting Mill. So some clarification on that would be appreciated.
Certainly. So this is part of the EPA grant that the city received last year, so this is a $500,000 grant to be used over three years. That grant, again, we did procure StanTech to kind of implement that grant for us. Again, this is a community-wide assessment, which is appropriate for communities that are beginning to address their brownfield challenges, as well as communities for ongoing efforts to bring site into productive reuse. And I read that directly from their website. The grant is not for only City of Manassia properties, it is to alleviate potential concerns for redevelopment opportunities. So oftentimes, when you have these heavy industrial sites, or adjacent to industrial sites, or just any type of environmental concern, from a developer's standpoint, they do not want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then run into an environmental issue later. So that is where this assessment grant funds come into play, where we can at least clarify or document what type of issues the site may have, so they can budget for those going into it, or to kind of write those issues off to say there are no concerns with the site, which gives that developer the benefit and to move forward with that site development.
So it was part of the Brownfields Assessment Grant that was awarded the city a while back.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Yeah. And then you would like to separate one?
Yes, I would like to separate check number 78182 for $50, made out to Jeff Nichols for his work on the Board of Review. Jeff is my husband, I'll be abstaining from that vote.
So we'll take a roll call vote then on the accounts payable and payroll, accept that one check, and then we'll take a second vote on just the one check. So if we could have a roll call vote, please? Throw in a curve ball at the new clerk?
Motion carries eight zero.
So did you get the number? Oh, it's stuck.
I've never added one there. This is my first time.
We can, might have to clear this one first. Should we just take voice vote?
I'm going to get it to work. No, no, you're fine.
No, no, you're fine. This is all one thing that he never showed up to do, so.
So we're just going to do a voice vote on this one? So we'll just have the clerk call the roll.
Did it work?
Oh, there it is! Just when we gave up, huh? There we go.
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Perfect. Item 2 is liquor license renewals for '23-24.
That's right.
There is a list within your council packet of the establishments. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing as the establishments listed have passed their inspections and no financial obligations are due to the city at this time, I move to approve the liquor license renewals for the '23-24 licensing year as listed in the clerk's memo dated June 1, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tomgrotty, and Alderman Eisenach wants to abstain.
Yes, please. Actually, I'm going to probably abstain from 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the action items.
Okay.
Please. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Item 3 is the outdoor alcoholic beverage service permit applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the outdoor alcoholic beverage permit applications for July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, for the establishments listed in the clerk's memo dated June 1, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Savannak?
Thank you, Mayor. When we established this, we had, unless it has changed on the two years that I was gone, they had to show actual pictures of the type of furniture that they were going to be putting out. So you may want to look at that. I mean, if they wanted to, they could throw a couch out there.
I think that was just landmarks, had to approve it, though? We could, we'll look at it, though.
Yeah. Because looking at this, these are cartoon drawings, and it's ridiculous, and it should be more professional, and it should be taken more serious. So, just follow through then on that.
So I believe there was a motion and a second? Correct? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Item 4 is the outdoor beverage service permit street serve. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one applicant for this, and I move to approve the outdoor street serve permit for that business for the 2023 licensing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tomgrotty. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Item 5 is the liquor license for the Rusted Roost. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the liquor license for Rusted Roost LLC, doing business as Rusted Roost Restaurant and Bar at 192 Main Street, for the term of June 5, 2023, through June 30, 2024. Or is it, it is just 2023, isn't it? For one month, sorry. June 5, 2023, through June 30, 2023.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grotty. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Item 6 is an offer to purchase. Is there a motion? Alderman Savannak?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the offer to purchase by a key property management LLC, include the addendum 1 and directing staff to draft and execute a land purchase and development agreement based upon the terms.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, Stan?
Yeah, I just thought I would read off the terms. So anyways, purchase would be $22,900, earnest money $2,000, within five days of acceptance, binding acceptance date of June 6, closing on June 20, and addendum 1 would be highlighted in number 3 through 6 and made part of.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, this is for 205 Mathewson Street, and Director Schrader, after the land purchase and development agreement is drafted, can we receive a copy of it as a communication?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance 4. Is there a motion? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I look for approval from the park board's ordinance 423, being an ordinance amending the title, Chapter 11, Title 11, Chapter 5, of the Code of Ordinances for Allowance of Consumption of Alcohol at Barker Farm Park.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Deputy Chief Handcheck, I know there is a paragraph from the Police Department included in our communications about allowing alcohol to be served at Barker Farm Park. Does the Police Department have any concerns about this?
No, we do not. That was prepared by Chief Thorne. He did confirm with me that if there were any questions, we support it. He requested our analyst, Officer Denton Hydeman, to pull the numbers in that, not only the park, but the surrounding areas, to see if we were having any issues, and we do not, so we approve and support the new ordinance.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Oh, not there quite yet?
Motion carries 8-0.
Item L was appointments. We do have three this evening. I would accept motions for them. Alderman Savannak?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your reappointment of Becky Nichols to the Redevelopment Authority for a term of 6523 through 9127, and please help me with this next name.
Alicia Buchler, I believe it is? Boucher?
For your appointment to the Redevelopment Authority for a term as the same as stated above.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Now we're going to separate them, I'm guessing? Alderman Nichols didn't want to vote on her own appointment.
Just push the abstain button.
But I would really like to vote for the appointment of the other person. Thank you.
Okay.
And then I will abstain from voting for myself, and I appreciate your support.
Okay, so the first...
I don't know yet. Don't vote.
So the first motion is just for the reappointment of Alderman Nichols, and seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote?
Motion carries 7-0 with 1 abstention.
Okay, we'll move back to item 2. Alderman Savannak, did you make that motion then as well? Okay. And there was a second then as well? Correct? Okay. Motion and a second. We don't need to take a roll call vote on this one then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item 3, Alderman Hammond?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Could I get some help with this name as well?
His name's Ted.
Well, I got that part.
Ted is seated in the back row.
Grade, grade.
Can you say that again, sir?
Script check.
Script check?
Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the approval of your appointment for Ted's grease check of the, to the housing, yeah, to the Housing Authority for the term of 6523 to 7126.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion except for pronunciation? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Opposed.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ted, for helping us on the Housing Authority. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment?
Sandra DeVill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Thank you for the clarification on the check register. I was just surprised that the city was entering private property with these, and I'm assuming we have some documentation in place that allows us to do that. I don't know. It would be nice if the council has provided all the other private locations that you're interested in looking at with this grant, so that those questions wouldn't come up again. And then lastly, I just, I didn't want to mention anything prior, but the appointment to the Redevelopment Authority, I just have to say this. I had requested to be on this RDA when Joe Loaks created it, more than 20 years ago. The mayor knows that, he's had letters from me, and I'm glad the people come forward and want to be on these committees. I know there were vacancies for a long time, my phone never rang. The mayor doesn't really want someone to ask questions, so that's why I'm never appointed to anything as long as he's mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassha with video recordings of city meetings. Manassha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanassha-wy.gov. To express opinions about City of Manassha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.